And that which is fifty percent of the number, five hundred and thirteen.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. This is a regular session of Chambers County Commission of Court, the twelfth day Tuesday, October the twelfth, nine thirty a.m. It is nine thirty now at the Chambers County Courthouse, also out on you two. Commissioner Tass, there's no ladies in the opening prayer.
Let's bow our heads and pray. Our most gracious Assembly Father, we come to you today to give you all the praise and glory for the will that you put in us to carry out your glory, Father. Father, I ask you to put a hedge of protection around each and every one of us as we go throughout the remainder of year and let us be your beacons of light in all we do. We ask all these things in Jesus Christ's most precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Actually, I'm enjoying.
He's talented.
Okay.
He's got years of practice.
We have no citizens comments. We will go to one point one. One point one, discuss and consider Chambers County Appraisal District Board of Directors.
All right. I will make a motion that we retain the same two. We got Alicia Turner and Joey Presnel. And we give five hundred and ninety-three votes to Alicia Turner and five hundred and ninety-two to Joey Presnel.
Motion back, Commissioner Combs. Second back, Commissioner Tass. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
So I think I have twelve hundred votes.
We had twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred, how many?
Five ninety-three and five ninety-two. The same thing that's on the resolution that's in the pact.
As from twenty nineteen.
Yeah.
The five ninety-three was for who's?
Uh, five ninety-three is for charter.
I'm gonna go get the votes.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Number one, appeal opponent.
Yeah, go ahead.
You're on page twelve.
Seven.
You have to go to page twelve. That's for the twenty twenty dollars.
Sorry.
No. Change. No, it went to twelve hundred.
Oh, it went to twelve hundred?
Yeah.
Okay, then I will modify that and say six hundred and six hundred.
Sorry, ma'am. amended motion, Commissioner Combs, the six hundred to six hundred. Commissioner Tass, I guess you needed your second. They amended their motion.
Six hundred.
Hundred to six hundred. All right. Same, same first and second, and all in favor, same. Okay, we'll go to one point two. They'll be here at nine forty. Uh, ten thirty, one point three. Is Corey available?
He's not on yet.
He's not on yet. George, your people still not here yet? Okay, we're gonna go to five point one, Economic Development Tourism. Is Samantha available? Discuss and consider pursuing the community resiliency program, C R P, through the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, T D H C A, for necessary public facility or public service needs in response to and in preparation for future pandemic.
I think Patrick was supposed to be here. Two out. Five point one and five point two.
Okay, we will hold off on five one and five two. Is Samantha available?
Uh, I didn't know that she was gonna be removed today after saying her the link.
That should make it.
Samantha, look out for an email if you're listening in.
Hold on, hold on as well.
BJ available?
Not yet.
Okay, Safety and Emergency Management, is Ryan available?
We need to come back later.
The only ones I was, all the sent to this one was BJ and Corey. And none of those were in Derek's end for whenever we get the copier stuff.
Okay.
And he just showed up.
Okay, we will go to, back to one point two. Discuss and consider renewing the to D I R Department of Information Resources uh, contract between Chambers County and Function Four LLC for all copiers and maintenance plan.
Okay, so as we come to the end of our, of our lease term, we're gonna go ahead and do another lease with Function Four. I had Commissioner Hammond sitting with our committee meeting with Function Four. Well, the big thing to take away from this is that we've had good service from Function Four. We've, uh, our maintenance has been a lot better and taken a big load off of I T. And I can have Austin shake his head, yes or no, as to what I'm saying, yes. Because they are doing the bulk of it. We're paying for the honor, but it's, it's, it's been good. And one of the things that I really want to make sure y'all take away is there's a thirty-two, a little over thirty-two thousand dollar savings per year going back with this contract. And we're gonna improve machines and we've got a new system coming into our copiers that should help us tracking, tracking uh, the amount of work that we have going throughout the county. Uh, the, um, I can say with a thirty-two thousand dollar savings, gentlemen, that'll just about cover our thirty grand for our uh, tracking that we're gonna start doing on all our equipment. So that's, that's, that's a good thing. Came at a good time and with a good thing. And Mark with Function Four is here. He is our rep. And uh, he uh, deal with four or five rest with different companies, but the Function Four has been one of the best ones to deal with as far as when you pick the phone up and, and have a question, you're gonna get an answer. And if there's issues with that, when you be talking to Mark. All right, so I'll let him follow up with that.
Green line.
I made the mistake of not introducing myself last time I was here, but uh, Mark McKee with Function Four. Commissioners, thank you all for, uh, for having me. Certainly appreciate the relationship that we've had with the county for a while. Uh, worked closely with George and with the M I S Department, Derek and Austin and Gabe and their team. Um, they've been fantastic to work with. Uh, one of the things that we take pride in, when we got involved with the account in twenty seventeen, I believe is what it was. Uh, we considered a partnership, a solution partnership, and, and hopefully in our world, it's not as glamorous to most, but uh, that's what we do is we crunch those numbers for a cost reduction solution, uh, long term. Uh, we've taken a couple of stabs at it, and there's always some shape shifting within an organization along the way. So uh, we leverage the state cooperative contracts that are available to you guys, uh, put you on a plan that's most advantageous that, that we recommend. And then also, uh, in our world, there's security enhancements along the way. So it's a, it's a kind of a package deal with that. So we're seeing uh, kind of a technology refresh and some other enhancements that drop down uh, costs overall. That's what we're looking at. And we back it with what we think is a, a good support team. We're only improving that as we uh, you know, grow our, you know, security and manage network services and just uh, you know, the, the printer repair team. And uh, we've got some, some good reviews, some feedback from uh, customers here at Chambers County, but uh, hope that everyone's experienced that, but that's what we're about. And uh, welcome you guys for any questions that you may have on, on this new agreement.
Anybody have any questions for Mark?
I just, I'll tell you, I saw you shake your head. Yeah.
Uh, this, uh, this, this that we have with them is great, having all one machine. And Derek can probably attest to some more of that, uh, but it's definitely the way you go.
Derek, you have any questions or comments on the, for Mark?
Give me a, Derek.
It's I T, it's I T for you.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, now, uh, I agree with Mark and I'll, I'll mention where uh, we are keeping more machines than we're replacing. Uh, so we're getting, uh, you know, we're getting a good value out of these. They've, uh, we don't experience a lot of um, issues with them, with them, but Mark is right. They're, they're fast to respond. They come out and fix them when we need them. And um, I think you'll see too, that like I said, being that we're keeping more than we're replacing. Um, we should get some cost savings there. One other thing I do want to mention is um, Mark, in this, we're including in the, the badging function to release uh, print jobs. So what that allow county employees to do is uh, basically any building that they're at that's got a machine with a badge reader. They can walk up and release a print job without, you know, having to, having to manually have it added to their machine first. So it's gonna, uh, we're gonna be adding in some functionality with this as well.
Well, what that is, to elaborate on it, if I may, uh, it's a secure print uh, feature. Uh, we do that a lot with a lot of governmental entities. I handle a lot of school districts. Uh, when you have those environments where multiple people are printing to one device, uh, you don't have to hit print and then run down there to go pick up your job. It doesn't get mixed up. Or, I mean, there's human behavior. You forget to go pick up that job. So there's a waste reduction aspect to that. So not to mention, the manufacturers like to tout a lot of uh, green initiatives, that whole uh, concept of that. But uh, there's some security uh, with that when you're talking about sensitive data that, I mean, a county organization will uh, facilitate day in and day out on the workflow, so.
Exactly.
Okay. We have any other comments?
Nah, just, I wanna thank Mark and his team for, for all the work they did. So it's pretty open and informed with us, so helped us get through all that, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Especially for me.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hammond, second by Commissioner Tass, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
George, you have just one year contract? What is it?
It's a five year.
Five year, okay.
And you're D I R, you are the co-ones.
Okay, you bet.
Yeah, we're stuck with him, man.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, George.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Commissioners, George, Mark. Appreciate it.
Okay, here's um, Corey, you?
He is.
I will go to Roden Bridge, three point one. Discuss and consider approval of reimbursement agreement for Meredith's Home of Texas LLC for design and construction portion of Chambers Parkway. Corey.
You're muted, Corey.
Can you hear us, Corey?
Can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Turn it on.
All right. Okay, I was just uh, in the process of texting y'all to find out what time y'all are gonna put me in. I guess I know.
Good morning, Corey.
Good morning.
We're on two point one with Meredith Homes.
And Corey, F Y I, we do have the final draft in front of us now. You saw Ashley's email earlier this morning approving it.
I did, yes. Everything looks good and I, I.
I changed that price number and also took my name off of it, but the judge's name.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yes, and it, it looked good to me as well. So uh, I would recommend approval at this point.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments for Corey or on this agenda item?
All right, just, Corey, you want to explain to everybody what's going on, what we're proving?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, so this is uh, we, as everybody knows, we've been working on what used to be called uh, Old Needle Point to, to upgrade that and, and bring it across. Uh, we've, we've changed that to now Chambers Parkway. Um, on that route, uh, between Needle Point, which runs north and south, uh, and ninety-nine, uh, there is a um, new home subdivision, and we're incorporating this uh, expansion of Chambers Parkway to run through that uh, subdivision. And so it was a little bit uh, difficult trying to figure out the planning on uh, how all that was gonna uh, play out and who was gonna be there first and everything else. They've been really good to work with. Um, they are gonna actually construct uh, the portion um, in conjunction with our design. And then we're gonna reimburse them for that portion of the construction. So this should be a win-win for uh, the community and ultimately for uh, the citizens of uh, Chambers County to be able to utilize that route.
Motion back, Commissioner Combs, second back, Commissioner Tass. Any further discussion? Appreciate it.
Real quick, uh, so this million dollar price tag, we're paying half of that and they're paying the other half?
Uh, yes.
Is that correct?
Well, that's a not exceed number, because engineer's budget number. And uh, Commissioner, let me show you. I know everybody, y'all, y'all have this little exhibit in the back. So the developer will be developing everything from, you see the portion that's outlined in red. They're gonna develop everything to the east of that all on their own. And then at the time that their, this other part gets developed, they're gonna do the south lanes and we're gonna do the north lanes. Cause we only need a two lane road. So that estimate, that million dollar estimate is for both lanes. And since it's being constructed at the same time, we're gonna split that fifty fifty with them.
Okay, so that's a pretty good cost savings for the county.
Oh, it is because we're getting the uh, benefit of bidding a much bigger job instead of just those two lanes.
And then we'll have to go back and finish everything from Needle Point Road West.
Right, that's what we've gotta do from Needle Point Road West.
And from, and from ninety-nine east.
As of now, we only have the right away funds approved for that.
Yes, right.
We still don't have.
But old, right, I'm speaking of ultimately though, right.
Now, those funds are coming out of the fifty million on the.
They're, they're part of the uh, bond funds.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that there's one out there. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, and does anybody have any questions on the consent agenda for Corey while he was here?
So uh, have y'all, do y'all now have the uh, documents for item thirty-four, which is the award of Bear Road?
Um, yes, oh, we don't, if it was emailed. They were gonna email them to us, Corey, but we did, I spoke with George this morning and it came in about a hundred thousand less than what we had budgeted.
And what's the number, two hundred?
Yeah, it was two sixty-five, three oh five. Uh, that was uh, Robert Carter uh, had that bid. And that is a little over a hundred thousand dollars cheaper than um, what we had a little over a month, or right at a month ago. So uh, we, we made it, we did make a few, a few tweaks to try to improve uh, the bids overall. I wasn't expecting it actually to be this much cheaper, but um, very happy with these bids. Uh, Robert Carter has done work uh, essentially for a county road. He, he constructed uh, Kilgore two B that we've uh, accepted into the, the county and had seen no issues with uh, over the last year. And so I would recommend the court accepting this bid. And awarding the project.
What, what is Robert's schedule? When can he actually move in, mobilize on that project?
He, he said he had no issue with moving in uh, immediately and being able to start on this project.
Okay, and this, we had that money in a tax note that was still left over.
There was some money left over on the tax note, then we had some money that Bayer actually is funding a portion of this also.
Okay.
And if, and if I may, uh, the scan bid should be coming to all of y'all's email here in a few minutes if you wanna look at the actual bids.
Okay.
Okay, if they don't come in the next two minutes, it'll be here before you go home.
Um, is Aaron, can Aaron hear me? How, how do you want to split that up? I mean, I guess Eric could do that. We're gonna let, we're gonna split it with Bayer or how we're gonna do it?
We're gonna utilize all of Bayer's funds and then what's remaining, we'll take out of the uh,
Tax note.
Tax note.
Okay.
So which, I guess my question is, which one are we gonna do? Are we doing the uh, minor or the major?
The major.
The major. So the, yes, so the major came out at two sixty-five, three oh five. So that is uh, we, we will be able to cover that without going uh, out. We'll, we'll have all of the funds uh, being able to commit, be committed through uh, the donation from, or I guess it wasn't donation, but the funds from Bayer are cabestro and the tax note. We won't have to dip into other funds, even to do the major work.
Great, that's, that's great. Appreciate the effort of going back out for bids on that and getting us a better deal. I greatly appreciate the effort.
And deployment, we should, as soon as we get a contract signed, which should be quick. Okay, we got most of this already ready. Uh, get it to Ashley, give it a blessing, and then uh, we should be deploying pretty fast.
Okay, Corey, now we're going to the, that, the road will be shut down during this process, right?
It will be, and I, and y'all have already given us permission to do that.
We have, okay, I just want to make sure that we push that out to the public so they're aware of closure.
Actually, we are coordinating that with the businesses.
Okay.
Around here.
We will.
No, just for note, the previous bid was four seventy-eight, which is about two hundred and ten thousand cheaper.
Fantastic. Corey, another item, actually you got several frontier requests for uh, right ways and stuff in here. And we, we've got some other issues going on with frontier, so would there be an issue if we just kinda set on that until the next court?
No, if, if we've got some issues going on, that, that would be my recommendation. That's the best way to get compliance.
Okay, all right. All right, so we are going to
So we will
Table.
Uh, table all of those items, which would be thirty-one, thirty, twenty-nine, twenty-eight, twenty-seven, twenty-six. Oh, and twenty.
Twenty-five.
Five, twenty-five and twenty-four and twenty-three.
Three.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Yeah.
Twenty.
And twenty.
Oh, yeah, right. Yep, very good. Wow, okay.
I will, uh, Corey, we will I guess maybe get you to contact Nathan to get the, the what's going on there with frontier.
Nathan Branhamart?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I will contact him and uh, get that. I was not aware of that. Okay, we will do that and uh, work towards gaining compliance and bringing this back. All right, and uh, also uh, notice that we have uh, you know, we will be advertising for uh, roadway materials uh, which includes uh, pipe and fuel um, in there. Um, so, and I wanna thank George also on this uh, rebid. Um, he's, he was, been very helpful in uh, being able to work with us and uh, get these bids out and uh, be able to acquire um, additional competitive bids that brings the price down. So uh, good job to our purchasing department as well.
Second down.
Okay, does anybody else have anything else? Or, it looks like we tabled most of these. Okay. If that's not, that is, that is all we have, or Corey, unless you have something else.
I do not. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Corey.
Have a blessed day.
You too, thank you. Bye.
Okay, I, um, if we want to stay on the consent agenda for uh, nineteen eighteen, I see Jeff Bradley here. Uh, I'll just read it, approve a professional service agreement with H O N K for continued design of Justice Center and temporary female dormitory design. George, I see Jeff here, we can discuss that real quick.
Yes, uh, and, and you have the contract and the verbiage there in your packet, and just to remind you, if uh, any uh, conversation about the, any property that might be needed for this, that will have to go to executive session. We can't discuss that. Other than that, sir, I'm ready, and Jeff is here if y'all wanna ask him questions.
Jeff, if you wanna.
I think you get to a button on my.
Thank you, James, for the record, please.
Uh, Jeff Bradley, H O K Architecture.
Morning, Jeff.
Does anyone have any questions or anything for Jeff on this nineteen eighteen?
I just have one, uh, the A and E rates. So for the female dormitory, the A and E rate was about ten and a half percent, so. I've seen a little bit high, particularly for what we do, so I just wondered why that number was so high.
Yeah, any, anytime you do what's called a renovation or retrofit, uh, typically that's a higher percentage rate. Two reasons, one is you don't know what you got or what you're getting into. Uh, when you have a greenfield site and you're building from the ground up, the only thing you, you don't know is what's under the ground.
Right.
And the other part, uh, typically cause you're having to go in, and instead of starting fresh with your mechanical, electrical, plumbing, structural and everything else, and like, um, you're going into a building that has systems that you haven't even seen yet. You don't know their, their state. And there are a lot of them gonna have to be redone, and it's not designed from the ground up. It's a renovation and they're typically messy projects. Greenfield sites are ideal and renovation retrofit, so they always put a couple more percent on it. And that's pretty common across the state and what we've done over the past fifteen years.
Any, any, any room for negotiation there since we are gonna build the Justice and Jail? I mean, we're gonna be that's gonna be a pretty substantial project. I think that's what Commissioner Hammond's alluding to, if we are gonna be going with y'all on that project as well, is anybody to negotiate a little bit lower rate for the tax fare?
Well, one thing we already did is we agreed to fast track this for y'all. Uh, this is having this project done in ten months. Yeah, that's.
That's pretty quick.
Yeah.
Okay, and I bring my second question uh, for the Justice Center. Now, we have it broke down into three, three sections, but uh, we're seven and a half, eight and a half, and nine percent on A and E for those projects, so. Uh, and that is from the ground up, so uh, just curious, typically we've been paying around, what, six percent X, so. Just wondering why those numbers are up also.
Uh, one of the reasons would be if they were broken out separate and we had to start and restart and start and restart and start and restart, not sure how it was gonna be funded. Uh, so that, that's why that's put in there, to come back three different times and bring teams back three different times. If we're hired to engage to design it all at one time and move forward with it, that's different. But if it's, we actually broke it down by phases for you, and if, if that was how it wanted to be initiated. Kurt's ultimately responsible for the, for the fee base on this. I can go get further clarification with him. Uh, if you would step outside and make a phone call with him and then come back in and readdress it with you on that. Um, I'm the national director. This is being run out of our Dallas office, and they're responsible for their uh, for their fee and their revenue. I, I, as a national director of a resource, I can't dictate their day-to-day business. Excuse me, if that makes, if that makes sense. But I'm happy to go back and get clarification, but uh, we, and it's, it's pretty common around the state. We do enough of our county work. Uh, say ninety percent of everything we do out of the Dallas office and Justice, we're the busiest fee firm in the state doing justice work over the past fifteen years. And the work that we are doing, that's a common fee percentage for what we do. This type of building type is a more sophisticated type. It's, and I don't, I don't know where, excuse me, um, where you paid six percent at, or what you paid it for. Uh, this is a very technical, complex building that is like no other, uh, especially the jail. Courthouse is a specialty. The law enforcement center, it's more of an office, but it does have some secure elements to it. But let me go down if, if, if you prefer. I'm, I'm happy to give Kurt a call and get a couple, a little better clarification on that answer for you.
Sure.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
Before you go, I got a quick question. Maybe I'm having a deja vu moment here or something, but had, didn't we negotiate and already two in agreement with H O K? Couple of years ago, we had the fee and everything, and then we had to put it on hold.
Well, I don't think it was ever signed, Commissioner, but I think we did get to a point where we were gonna do something, then everything went, we stopped, we stopped the process.
But we had negotiated the fee and all that stuff previously.
That's, I, I, I have the same thought process, and that's when I was thinking it around six. And I mean, just my thought.
Yeah, I, I, you know, and I realized we had to put on breaks. I, I get that. Yeah, I, I, you know, and I realized we had to put on breaks. I, I get that, but, you know, I don't want to reinvent the wheel if we've already done it one time. I'd like to go back and look at it because I do know Scott spent a lot of time of, you know, reviewing and looking at the agreement. And I was rather surprised to see a new agreement because I thought we'd already crossed that bridge. Maybe we have not. I could be wrong, but.
We, we can go back and look at what was the original agreement and see if we got apples to apples, but Commissioner Hammond, Commissioner Hammond's six percent is usually like your PPK is dealing with some of the stuff they deal with. But when I was doing this RFQ for these jails and this Justice Center, yes, sir, it was a different animal altogether. And this pricing was different because of the specialty of this, of this, uh, project. And again, I learned as I was going on that particular project, but I'm sure Kirk can add some more to what, uh, what you're asking. But on the original one, let's go back and look at, let's go back and see what it was originally. Uh, I'll get it, find it and get it to all four of y'all.
Okay.
All five of y'all.
With, with that being said, I mean, if we approve this here, we're approving these fees. But, okay, but, but we need to move forward with the female dormitory.
That, that's, that's, that's our problem, right?
That's our issue right there. But can we split this where we, if, if the court wants to and they, they feel comfortable with approving that and not the Justice Center design? I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I would feel comfortable with that, but I just, if we already had done this and made an agreement and, and I know, uh, you know, Scott was very particular about reviewing and looking at the contract. And I maybe, I could be remembering things that's not there, but I'm having a deja vu moment. I thought we'd already crossed this bridge with the Justice.
We just didn't have anything in sign. We have not signed a contract.
But we had a agreeable. Right, right. We did, we'd already hammered out.
I thought so too.
And again, it's a good point. We can look at that. And, uh, as far as what you're saying, Commissioner, that's up to you. If you want to table one piece and agree to the other, just know that we got to get this, the female.
I want to get it all done.
Yes, sir. I understand.
Is, is the sheriff going to be here today?
He said he may be late. Uh, he was in Galveston this morning. He had, uh, open remarks for a convention, um, some type of event and so on. He said he would try to be here later in the day.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Do y'all want to, uh, hold off on this in here? We hadn't, we're not approving the consent right now anyway. Let him do some phone calling for us.
And could we possibly check and see if we got a copy of the other agreement somewhere in the meantime?
Okay. Uh, if you want to do your phone call and then come back to it, we'll hold off on that. We'll go to some other.
Thanks, Commissioner. Yeah, I'll be back.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, is Samantha ready?
Uh, so I got an auto reply from her email that she's out of town. So.
Okay, we'll go to economic development tourism, five point one, discuss and consider pursuing the community reserve issue program, seek RP through the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, TVHCA, for necessary public facility or public service needs in response to and in preparation for future pandemic.
If Patrick's not going to be here to present these, he spoke, are we still on one and two?
No, with five one. Is Patrick, can you contact Patrick and see if he can? Okay, we will go to.
You're having a hard time.
I see, I see BJ here. I see BJ. Be down to five point, five, five point five. BJ. Good morning.
Morning, Commissioner. Sorry.
Five point five public hearing at ten AM. It is ten oh four AM. We're going into TGSCP seven five seven five Sutton Road LLC, twenty twenty-one reinvestment zone. And we will recess out of regular session and go into the public hearing at ten oh four eight. Any public comments? Hearing none. Turned out of public hearings back into regular session, Commissioner Ford at ten oh five. And we'll go to five point six, discuss to consider for the designation of TGSCP seven five seven five Sutton Road LLC, twenty twenty-one reinvestment zone. BJ.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, this is an order that is effectively designating the, and creating the TGSCP seven five seven five Sutton Road LLC, twenty twenty-one reinvestment zone. This is required to move forward with the tax payment process. By way of reminder, the court approved the application uh, that was presented for the reinvestment zone on September twenty-eighth. Project is a build-to-suit project and Cedarport Industrial Park, five hundred and seven thousand square foot facility. Job creation expected forty to fifty full-time jobs by year twenty twenty-two and expected to grow to up to three hundred full-time jobs by twenty twenty-seven. Um, all the proper notices were published and provided to the other taxing entities and it's presented for your approval today.
Any questions or comments for BJ? I'll make a motion for approval to reinvest the zone. Motion by Commissioner Combs, seconded by Commissioner Hammond. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Unopposed. Motion carries. Move to five seven, discuss to consider conducting a public hearing on November twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. Regarding the TGSCP seventy-five seven five Sutton Road LLC tax abatement agreement.
Yes, this is simply a request to, um, yeah, publish the notice of public hearing to, for the court's consideration and tax payment for the TGS seven five seven five Sutton Road project.
Set that public hearing for ten AM?
Ten AM. That'd be my motion. November twenty-third, two thousand and one, ten AM.
Twenty-one. Motion by Commissioner Combs, seconded by Commissioner Hammond. No further discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Yes, this is a, a.
I'm sorry, I gotta let Judge call it.
Eight, discuss and consider reschedule a public hearing regarding TGSCP six three six three LLC to twenty twenty-one tax abatement agreement to November twenty-third, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a project that was approved by the court. Notice of public hearing was, um, uh, established in the twenty twenty, I'm sorry, the eight twenty-four twenty-one, uh, court. Um, the terms, this is a speculative development, and so the terms are still being worked out with the applicant. And so, uh, want to get that squared away. Uh, and so the request is to place it on the same, uh, date for public hearing for the TGS Sutton Road project.
Ten AM, will?
Yes.
Enter, entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Combs.
Sorry.
Second by Commissioner Hammond, to set a public hearing regarding TGSCP six three six three LLC at ten AM, November twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. No further discussion. All in favor?
I got a question. Is actually, uh, back to the other one, but how are we coming on getting the tenant on the five point seven one that we just approved? The inventory numbers?
We should have those prior to actually, uh, the, the first court in, in November um, and present draft elements of the agreement. At that time, also, given that the tax payment guidelines have to be updated and approved or presented for approval recommendations um, on the ninth, I think is, is that, yeah, the ninth, eleven ninth court.
And we're not having any issues with the way we're doing the new school tax or anything?
That is still in flex, Commissioner. I mean, I think that had some discussions with, uh, Prail's district and the judge and others. I think this week, hopefully that can be hammered out.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we had a motion in the second. All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, BJ. Thank you. Hey, did you send it? We're gonna call in Patrick?
I sent the emails to have a secret response.
Yes, ma'am. Oh, is Ryan here? Okay. That is for ten thirty. Okay, we do it anytime, or? Okay, let's let Ryan in. Please. Morning, Ryan. Safety and emergency management, the ten point one, discuss and consider safety jackpot, safety incentive program. Ryan.
Morning. Sorry, I was, I was muted. Just trying to tell you all good morning. Uh, hi, how are y'all?
Good, and you?
Hey, Ryan. Yes, sir.
Okay, we're, we're discussing ten point one, discussing center safety jackpot incentive program.
Yes, sir. So, uh, if you guys recall back, I want to say it was when we were doing the twenty nineteen budget hearings, we had presented this. Uh, basically, it's an incentive program that where people are rewarded for safe behavior by being provided uh, these scratch-off cards that can be redeemed later. There's a catalog, uh, the safety jackpot manages that. Uh, we discovered this at a tack risk management seminar that we had gone to or workshop we had gone to. And so anyway, uh, it wasn't implemented in twenty twenty, and so we were looking at moving forward and implementing it now and trying to get that program off the ground. And it's currently, it's currently was budgeted in the, uh, in the safety line. I had to do a little transfer to add a little bit more to it because as everything else, costs went up slightly on, on some things, uh, since twenty nineteen, so.
I didn't, I didn't see the sheriff on this list. Uh, see all of them. They come up to a hundred fifty-seven.
It'd be a little bit more than that. And, uh, we, uh, I believe the, the idea was let's get it off the ground and then start adding departments to it.
Okay.
Uh, but we can revamp it however, uh, however it's felt best. Uh, the main thing is that we didn't want anybody to feel left out of the program, but we also need to try to get it off the ground and, uh, see how it was going to work.
Okay. On your budget, Ryan, I, I know you said we had the budget, money budget, didn't have to shift some around, but your pretty little red dot there is completely red. There is, it says zero remaining.
Yes, and, and the, there was one line that was going to be used for that in the safety budget, and that was it. And so then we transferred, so we had exactly enough in that, that line. It was the, uh, three, four, two of line, the contractual other in the safety budget.
Okay, so this is for, this is for starting in twenty twenty-two?
Well, we were going to try to go ahead and start. It's, it's budgeted in twenty twenty-two as well, so we, we were feeling like, well, let's go ahead and, uh, get it made, get it implemented, um, the, uh, it wouldn't be wasted. We would be able to, uh, can, you know, implement it again in, um, twenty twenty-two, like you're saying, and continue it.
So you'd only use about, what, four thousand, five thousand this year? For the remainder of the year?
Well, it would be, um, I believe for a year. So we'd be kind of ahead of the game as far as paying for it. So it would, it would, uh, be a yearly purchase, so we just didn't get to start, you know, January one, uh, is what I'm saying. So we would be a little ahead of the game and we could, uh, next year, we would, wouldn't have to pay for about a year.
Okay, so it runs.
Right.
Whenever you implement it.
That's my understanding, yes, sir, that, that it's a, it's a yearly type deal. A lot, a lot of places run October to October, but uh, ju- judging on the calls we get around October from vendors, but, uh, I think we do. But uh, anyway, that's the concept. Uh, if, if you would like us to, to add another department to it before we implement it, uh, I'd be happy to get uh, a cost on that. Uh, I believe if we added the SO, we're talking fifty-five, sixty, maybe, I'm not sure. I'd have to find out from them, uh, the exact number, but if you would like me to find out what the cost difference would be on that, I'd be glad to do that.
And that's up to the court.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I would like to include the sheriff's office on it. Uh, you know, when you look at our accident rates and where they are, sheriff's department's definitely one of the, uh, higher injury rates. So, you know, any incentive we can get over there. I mean, really, this is just, it's an investment. It's not really an expense. And, you know, it's what we need to look at.
Yeah, and it can be added after we, we initiate or we can, uh, we can wait and, and do, you know, get a quote from them and bring it back next court. However, uh, the court would like to proceed, we'll be happy to.
But we could start this and then come back next court too.
Right.
Where would we get the funds for to pay for the extra? You got it in your drawer there? I see you pulling it out.
Uh, if we don't have it in, if I don't have it in budget, I will. We have a supplies line with some funding in it, but we were looking at, uh, maybe using that to, for some PPE purchases that we had, we had been discussing that we need to do. But we may not be using all of it for that.
I mean, I don't know. I mean, maybe some out of oh ninety-one since it is for health and safety.
You know what? Sheriff's could be.
That, that's my thought on here. We could check into that, Ryan.
Oh, no problem.
Check for the sheriff.
Check the sheriff and we can, if the court chooses to approve this and then bring it back next court to look at the SO.
Sure.
And see what's going to come.
That's not a problem because I really, I really don't know what, uh, exact amount I would be, I would be, uh, looking at at this point. So, I mean, it may, and it may only be, I mean, maybe ten thousand. It may be less than that. I would have to, to get with them to revise the.
Okay. Uh, we have no further discussion. I'm going to entertain motion.
Yeah, just hold on one second. I, our, our safety stats, how do we publish those or distribute those? I, I haven't seen any for the county. So injury rate and first aid.
That's correct. Uh, from what I'm able to determine, they hadn't been tracked, uh, for a little while. And so uh, the safety coordinator is getting back on track with a spreadsheet. And also she got with, uh, with HR on getting injury reports since the beginning of the year, so she can go back and, and make a spreadsheet. And, um, so that you guys can see where those injuries are occurring and what types of injuries are occurring.
Okay.
Now, we had, we have a, um, protocol on if someone is injured, who they contact and what department they go to, comes back to HR, goes to everybody. We do.
Yes, yes. They just, there's a, there's a lot of things that we're, we're trying to get back on track and we're chipping away at to, to get back on track that, uh, looks like it fell to the wayside. So, uh, and that, those stats are one of them. Uh, we want to be able to have a running record of all the stats so that at any time uh, you all need to know, we are able to show that to you.
Do you think it would be possible to share that with the department liaison?
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, you know, just on a real-time basis, whenever it happens.
That's not a problem at all. We can make that happen. I, I'll just need to make sure I know who the, the liaisons are. I'll get with the, uh, with the judge's office and make sure that, uh, we know the appropriate person.
Oh, I wouldn't mind that getting just published to the court itself. I mean, no way. Everybody's aware of that and we know what's going on, so.
And make it easy. We could, uh, that way we don't have to look and figure out who the right person is. We can just send it. And it's okay as long as it's information, right?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Entertaining motion?
Motion.
Hammond. So, like, with the Combs. No further discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Ten point two. Discuss and consider resolution in support of authorizing the efficient civil suit against Bose RV Park and those persons and entities responsible. efficient civil suit against Bose RV Park and those persons and entities responsible for compliance with chapter one of the Chambers County Fire Code at five, two, five, zero, eight, State Highway one twenty-four, Winnie, Texas, in order to enjoy the violation and threaten violation of the fire code to cover civil penalties for the violation of the fire code at this location, Ryan.
So we have been working with the county attorney's office on, um, on enforcement measures, and essentially, there's two ways, uh, that, that code can be enforced, if it's a danger or a hazard that we can articulate, then we can use government code three fifty-two, local government code three fifty-two, uh, which in, imposes a criminal penalty if they don't comply and correct the, the hazard. The other means is via local government code two thirty-three, and it prescribes a civil penalty per day up to two hundred dollars if someone, uh, for instance, you know, builds without a permit and we can't get them back into compliance. Uh, but, and the county attorney would have to, to assess that and move that, well, actually move that case forward, and I guess the judge would be, a district judge would be assessing it, so we've been working with the county attorney, uh, here recently to come up with a system. Um, Travis County has a really good, uh, system going, and so we, we patterned it after them, had conversations with them, theirs has been very successful. Um, and so for those things that, that aren't hazardous, but they're a violation of, uh, court adopted procedures like permitting or, or different things like that, that's, that's when this would be, this measure would be instituted in consultation with a county attorney, of course.
What are the fees and penalties?
Well, it's up, it's up to two hundred dollars a day, and so what we did was we, we came up with a, a, a little matrix, uh, that we borrowed from Travis County that basically it assigns a, 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 the penalty based on factors like history of non-compliance, uh, whether this is a second time, third time, whatever, that the person's happening. Uh, it uses some factors in there that, that we can rate, so it, it could be anywhere from, you know, up, up to two hundred, no more than two hundred a day, um, based on the circumstances surrounding that actual situation.
And it still has to go before a court of some score, either a JP Court or county court at law?
Right, right, it wouldn't, it wouldn't just be us, uh, instituted by ourselves. So it would have to go to the county attorney, they'd have to review it, and then would, you're right, so it'd have to be presented to a court like that for consideration, uh, in, in determination.
Okay. Any more questions? Entertaining motion?
So moved.
Time, second by?
Sorry.
No further discussion, all in favor? All right, opposed, motion carries, thank you, Ryan.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Ryan.
Hey, I'm in line for a root canal, so if my boy, my mouth sounds puffy when I talk, so, wish me luck.
We're not gonna say anything to drool it on yourself.
Yeah, I might, I don't know, I can't tell.
Anybody need Ryan? Patrick.
All right, we'll see y'all.
Good luck, Ryan.
All right, thank you.
Okay, economic development tourism, five point one, discuss, consider pursuing the community resilience program, C R P, through the Texas Service Department of Housing and Community Affairs, T D H C A, for necessary public facility, public service needs in response to and in preparation for future pandemic. Patrick.
Can y'all hear me all right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good, good morning, how's everybody doing? Sorry that I'm not there, uh, in person, I'm on the road today, so, um, hopefully you can hear me well. Um, I don't know if, uh, um, how much detail's in the packet. Uh, this is a brand new program, so the program itself was released on October first, uh, through the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, and just to give a brief, um, kind of history on that, so, uh, T D H C A received, uh, C D B G cares money last year, so last, uh, March, April. And they, they originally dedicated their, their allocation from HUD for the C D B G funds from the pandemic, uh, for mortgage assistance, you know, rental relief assistance, but they've had trouble spending those dollars. And so they, they recreated or they, they modified their, you know, their use of those CARES Act funding, uh, to create a new program called the Community Resiliency Program. And, uh, that, that program was, was, was finalized and released on October first. They've split this program up into two different ways to use the funds, one of them is they call community facilities, and one of them they call, um, are public facilities, and the other one they call public services, and those are two different, two different, um, types of programs, the public facilities is improvements to actual facilities, and it's, you know, senior centers, homeless centers, um, centers of domestic violence, healthcare centers. Um, public services, on the other hand, are more for mobile equipment. Um, in that you can get funding for, you know, an ambulance, a mobile testing center, um, things like that, all in an effort to, uh, respond to and prepare for uh, this pandemic and or future pandemics. And so the program was released on October first, I, I reached out to, to Sam, uh, the following Monday, uh, and, um, kind of discussed this with her about an option for the county to consider pursuing. Um, there may be some projects that you guys have in mind that you, you know, that could fit within this mold. Um, the, the application deadline for this is, uh, November thirtieth, so it's a very tight turnaround, tight timeframe. Um, there's actually a, uh, webinar with T D H C A tomorrow, uh, afternoon that will, we will be on, but we wanted to at least get this to the court. Um, because of the timing of everything, as soon as we could, to allow you guys to, you know, consider pursuing this, this funding opportunity, and we're asked some questions about it that I may be able to answer, uh, relative to this new program.
I'm here as well, guys.
Hey.
Good morning.
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 Uh, do anyone have any questions for Patrick or Samantha?
So all we're doing now is authorizing to put in an application for the program.
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
I will invoke all the questions on entertaining motion.
Come on, you guys.
Second.
Motion back to Mr. Collins, second back to Mr. Hammond.
About fifteen seconds.
What Pa- Patrick didn't, I don't know if he mentioned it or not, is that, um, there's no match associated with this program. And Patrick, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's what, five hundred thousand dollar minimum, up to a five million dollar maximum, so it's a really great program for us to look at. It is a quick turnaround time, but, um, I think it's a good, a good program to participate in.
Yeah, that's correct, I, I did not mention that, but it is a five hundred thousand dollar minimum application up to a five million dollar maximum application with no match requirement.
That's great, thank you. Uh, for a discussion, entertaining, uh, motion, you already got a motion, all in favor? Any opposed, motion carries, look to five point two, discuss and consider authorizing staff to initiate procurement of administrative services and engineer, engineering architectural service for application development of program information associated with the community resiliency program, Patrick.
I can take this one, that just gives us, gives my office, um, approval to move forward with procurement of, of professional services. Um, I always like to ask permission before we do anything. And we'll work with the purchasing department like we always do for that.
Okay, do we have somebody in mind for that?
Legally, we cannot.
Okay.
George, you good or whatever?
We can solicit, we can solicit any when you want.
Same.
Anyone have any questions or comments? Entertaining motion?
Your motion.
Hammond, second by Commissioner Tass, no further discussion, all in favor?
Yeah.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, five point three, discuss to consider updating Chambers County Hot Fund Grant Program to streamline requirements and better align with state mandates, Matthew.
Uh, I, I think, um, Patrick, that's all we needed from you, thanks for taking time out of your day, I don't want to keep you any longer, but, um, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thanks, Patrick.
I'll take care.
Take travel.
Thank you.
So, um, this hot fund application, I know it was a ton of paperwork that I put into the packet as usual. Um, but basically, I've talked to you about it for about a year now, um, we've been working on it with Aaron and the auditor's office to streamline this process. The current process that we have in place is, um, has been in place for probably a decade, and it's just not super user friendly for the applicants, and it's not super user friendly for you guys or us either. Um, and I also don't know that we're doing a, um, a good enough job aligning our program with the state mandated, um, goals of the hot fund program. I think there are some other opportunities that we could be funding through this grant type program that we're not. Um, and I think that there are some ways that we could be getting better numbers in case the comptroller's office ever comes and audits us. So basically, over the past year, I've worked with, um, kind of a committee that we formed to streamline the process into more of a single annual grant application, because that's ultimately what this is, is a grant that we're providing to these organizations. So basically, we'll have, uh, an application due at the same time every year for everybody. We'll have a committee that reviews all of the applications and comes to you guys and makes a recommendation, obviously, you guys have final say. You can do what the committee says or not, uh, do what the committee says, but that kind of takes some of the onus off of you guys of, um, having to make those decisions. And then, um, everybody will get all of their money at the end of January, every year, the following year of the application. But that basically streamlines a grant program, um, it also gives us some measuring tools that we don't currently have in place, and all of the forms are just way more user friendly.
Okay, you don't want to have any questions for Samantha?
How do we get the grant recipients to, uh, start complying and follow it up? Notice you can mention that, that's a.
Yes, it is a huge issue that we have, um, you know, I think I don't want to be ugly or mean, but I think we're gonna have to start putting some pressure on them, and we're gonna have to start, you know, we have for a long time, whether or not they did what they were supposed to do, we still gave them their money. And we may need to start, you know, and that is part of the application and part of the review process now, if you look at that rubric, you know, did they comply with their regulations for the previous year? And that may need to affect, you know, if they ask for ten thousand dollars, but you're not turning in your, your quarterly reports, maybe you don't get your full ten thousand dollars that you request until you can show us that you are following the rules, I mean, um, as the county, my, in my office, if we don't do what we're supposed to do on a grant, we lose money, and that's what this ultimately is, um, you know, we do a good job of reminding our grant recep- our hot fund grant recipients, recipients, excuse me, every quarter that they need to turn their reports in, and they still don't do it, um, I just think we're gonna have to have a more firm hand, basically.
Or if you want to come up with a chart or something like that showing each offense and how much we reduce it, I mean, we will look at that and consider that in court as part of.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yes, I can definitely do that.
Anybody else have any questions for Samantha?
No, but I would like to give a big thank you to Samantha for all of your hard work and putting this together, really.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Say always.
Okay, well, entertaining motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Tass, seconded by?
Second.
Hammond, no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Okay, we'll go down to five point four, discuss and consider participating in the Texas, the state of Texas offense of the Governor's Office of Criminal Justice Division, basically year twenty twenty-two, body worn camera grant program.
That one's a, a tongue twister, I know, but basically, um, this is a program that H G A C, uh, informed us about that will pay seventy-five percent of the cost of body worn cameras. I know that several departments have, uh, submitted requests for next year's budget to purchase cameras, and I think this is a good opportunity for us to offset that cost, basically. Um, it's a pretty quick turnaround time on it, although it's not a whole lot of legwork, because the departments have already done their work on this. Um, I did talk to Sherry at the sheriff's office, and she said they would be interested in participating, I talked to Ryan and Quentin as well. Uh, one department or one group of departments, I should say, that was not included or had not requested body worn cameras was the, uh, constables, but I'd like to include them in this as well. Um, and the funding becomes available if you're approved March of next year, so, you know, it's not something that we're waiting just a whole long time on like we usually do with grants. But again, I kind of always look for opportunities to offset costs for the county. Um, you guys have already budgeted this money, but this would be an opportunity to spend twenty-five percent of what you've budgeted, and you'd have that remaining seventy-five percent to spend on something else.
Was it, was that on the list that we had?
Yes.
Okay.
So Samantha, is there, uh, is there some way we can paraphillip back with that, if we go ahead and purchase stuff?
Um, you know, I'm not really sure, I need to look into it and see if we can, uh, do a reimbursement on it. Quite possibly, yes, um, as long as we know we're gonna receive the funding, if we go ahead and expend that money, um, let me do some research and I'll let you know.
Okay, cool, thanks, Sheriff's Department's already kind of got the ball rolling.
Right, and, and that's understandable.
Cameras.
Right, and so I know that both, uh, the sheriff's office and the, um, fire marshal and communications are looking at a specific vendor, and they are approved for this grant, so let me just do some research and I'll let you know.
We got, we got the DA's office in there as well?
I di- I didn't, but I can absolutely include them, whoever, uh, basically, if any departments are listening or anybody that you guys are aware of wants to be included in this, and even if, you know, the sheriff's office has already got the ball rolling and doesn't want to wait till March, and the other departments are okay with waiting till March, anything we can do to offset county budget, I'm happy to work on. So, um, if, if, um, Tommy wants to get with me and let me know how many they need, that would be totally fine.
Samantha, Cheryl, are you talking about Tommy Henry?
Yes.
Okay, you're talking about body cam?
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am.
Hey, do you have one?
No, we don't.
We have two.
Two, yes, ma'am, okay, I'll add y'all in.
Okay, listen, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, when I, uh, read these grants, I always try to look for strings attached, because there's always strings attached.
Right.
And, and I was pleased to read in this one, the strings that are attached that we must comply with the Department of Homeland Security, and we must detain illegal lateness, you know, so, uh, that's one time I liked your strengths.
Right, this is a good program, I was really excited, I've been looking for two years for a program like this, because I know that, um, that was, body worn cameras are absolutely something that is necessary. And, um, so I was excited about this program, and it only, I know that most of these cameras are now cloud based, and they have a fee associated with them, one thing I did just want to point out was that this will pay for that first year's prorated fee, um, from what I understand, most are a three year contract, so this will pay a third of that contract fee. But if it's an annual program, we can continue to apply for it and, um, potentially pay for that fee annually, so, um, it's a really good program, though.
Anyone else have any questions or comments, if not, we'll, uh, entertain a motion.
Like motion.
Question back, Commissioner Hammond, second by, Mr. Tass, no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you, Samantha.
Thank you, Samantha.
Guys.
Thanks.
Okay, we're going to go back up to one point one to this. Discussing, consider the creation of the District Attorney's Criminal Investigation Division and the swearing in of Tommy L. Henry by the Chambers County District Attorney, Cheryl Swope Lee.
Uh, I had previously was carrying a tape home license, uh, years ago, when I had my first investigator, and I let that lapse to see if I needed to continue to do.
Oh, so you're picking her up?
Uh, we'll see.
Yeah, and so now we've started back again, so. I carry a license for Sergeant Henry. All right, I'm ready, right here. Okay. I, Tommy O. Henry.
I, Tommy O. Henry.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute.
The duties of investigator for the Office of the District Attorney of Chambers County.
The duties of investigator for the office or for the district, for the Office of District Attorney of Chambers County.
And for the state of Texas.
And for the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect and defend the Constitution.
Preserve, protect and defend the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
I furthermore solemnly swear.
I furthermore solemnly swear.
That I have not directly nor indirectly paid.
That I have not directly nor indirectly paid.
Offered or promised to pay.
Offered or promised to pay.
Contributed nor promised to contribute.
Contributed nor promised to contribute.
Any money or valuable thing.
Any money or valuable things.
Or promise any public office or employment.
Or promise to any public office or.
Employment.
Employment.
As a reward to secure my appointment.
As a reward to secure my appointment.
Or the confirmation thereof.
Or the confirmation thereof.
All right, congratulations. Oh, that is, okay. I don't want to block anybody. You know how it is when you're six feet tall. No, we don't, you guys get down.
Oh, sorry.
I was tall, no. She's still, she's still thinking. I sit on the front row very. All right. Mark, he's around, yeah, you got him. Michael, honey. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we can sign officially in front of everybody.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay. You're asking me like I'm supposed to know. I, and I think you would think I would. They don't let me take paper or use a cop paper.
Appreciate, just, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Got Tommy.
Thank y'all.
Right, first day, Tommy.
Do we need a motion over?
Uh, we didn't.
Intertain a motion. Commissioner Combs, second by Commissioner Tass. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I have back to one, back to Susan's comments. I do have one by Ms. Heather.
Good morning. Good morning, Court. I just wanted to give a brief update on our upcoming election. We will start early voting next week. Um, it is a constitutional amendment election and we have a joint election with the city of Baytown. Um, early voting and election day sites, remember we are now at countywide voting locations. So early voting and election day sites are posted on the website. Uh, countywide polling just means on election day, you can vote anywhere at, at any site that is posted. Um, so in our, uh, elections page on our website looks awesome. Thanks to the IT Department and Leanne Martin, uh, for getting all of the information there. We have a QR code which cracks me up because you asked me 10 years ago, I wouldn't have known what a QR code is. Um, so we have, we have made a lot of improvements. Um, the Elections Division or Department of the County Clerk's Office is located on the third floor of the courthouse. And we are also in charge of voter registration. The next thing I'd like to update really quickly is redistricting. Uh, met with the, uh, attorney for our redistricting project for Chambers County on Friday. He has sent a map, um, for the things that we discussed, Lauren and Erin and Austin. I made sure we had young people in the meeting so that way 10 years from now, you know, when, when I'm not going to be here, that there's somebody that recalls what we did during redistricting. Um, so we met with him on Friday. He sent a map. It's a GIS map, which of course, again, I, I didn't know that technology 10 years ago. I'm learning quickly. So I forwarded that map onto Brad Wilber and asked him to print that and get that over to us this morning. Um, but census blocks are a tricky, tricky business. Um, you and I can drive around the county and see land and, and we'll just say, well, there's nobody that lives there, but the census block itself may stretch a lot further than what the eye sees just driving around. And so, um, we've made some, some small changes. Nothing dramatic, which is nice for the county. Um, and, uh, so he's not only going to send that map today, but he's also working on some other proposals just to give you some ideas or options on what's available as far as, as how we can slice up the county for a better, not for better terminology. Um, so we're hoping to have that update on the next court. Um, we're working under an extreme deadline because the maps need to be in place so that when, uh, candidates file for office, starting on November 13th, that we a- actually know who is running for what office. We are on track currently to have a March 1st primary. Um, the legislature is, is moving right along. Um, for historical information, um, we were scheduled to have a March primary 10 years ago and it kept getting pushed back because of the courts, not because the maps weren't correct or it, uh, submitted. So that's, so I've had several people ask me about, um, the maps as far as will the primary get pushed back? The only way the primary is going to get pushed back is through the court system, not because the maps aren't ready. So, um, and the legislature is dwindling down, um, to end this current special session. And of course, we'll be called right back if the, if the maps are not finished. Um, and so, uh, our, our Senate map looks like we still retain Senator Creighton and our, uh, House map looks like we still obviously ma- uh, have Mays because he's a resident of Chambers County, so they, they didn't redistrict him out of his own, his own residence. Uh, other than that, I don't know. I'll entertain any questions.
Nick, when, if you say it'll be on next court, next court, would we set a public hearing for that?
Yes, sir. So next court, we, I think there's already some discussion on some JP lines that still have to be. JP's and constable's lines that still have to be, um, addressed. The current map that we will, that we worked on Friday and hopefully we'll have that print today is just commissioner lines is what we've worked on. Um, we want to get those in place. Obviously, as you know, we have, um, to create new election precincts because of not in compliance, but we wanted to get the commissioners' maps in place and then worry about the elections, uh, election precincts and the JP and constable precincts. So that will be addressed or that's what we're going to, uh, plan to put on the 28th court and then set a public hearing and hopefully move forward and have things done by mid-November because that's the timeline we're on.
How many election precincts are we looking at adding?
Um, currently we're looking at adding two by law, but we may add a third one um, because of the fact that there's so much growth in, in a particular area that it would just save us some time two years from now if we go ahead and, and split it. And remember that splitting the precinct is just, um, following the election code up to 5,000 uh, registered voters, but it really doesn't change the fact that there's the same amount of voters in that area. It's just splitting that election precinct. Obviously, we are praying that everything is successful with this election and that we will apply for permanent si- status with the Secretary of State so that we will have countywide polling, um, from this point on. Uh, Commissioner Combs, I know that you and I have discussed the need for a polling location in your precinct, obviously with the things I drive by and see every day in Cove. That's very promising for a countywide polling location for a huge part of the population with the Goss Library. So we're moving in the right direction.
I see you moved the early voting to the Winnie Library.
We did. Um, we have decided, or I have decided, who's we? I have decided that what's best for, uh, the constituents in Chambers County is to use the libraries instead of courtrooms for, uh, voting. It sure helps the, uh, County Attorney's Office with JP settings not taking up two weeks of early voting in that situation. On the, uh, far west side of the county, we're still not that blessed. We don't have, um, another public facility over there without using the school on 146. And we're sure trying to stay away from that because of the complications of using schools and elections. Um, it just goes without saying that there's so many rules involved when you use a school. So hopefully we're going to solve the problem on the west side and, and be able to create another polling location um, that will serve for years to come as a countywide polling location. The library in Winnie also serves really because it's a great right there by the schools and it's really a kind of a division between Winnie and Stoll, so it really helps.
You have a big conference room.
Yes, yes. Well planned, gentlemen. Well planned on getting some libraries with some space. Any other questions? All right, thank you, and I look forward to the 28th, uh, court where we can have some further discussion.
Thank you.
I think it's a 28. 26, 28, whatever.
Well, it's a couple of days.
Thank you, Ms. Arthur.
You went over your.
Thank you, Deborah. Okay, uh, we want to take a break?
Yes, please.
We take the two, we will come back at 11 o'clock.
You have the time.
All right, you may go.
Okay, regular session, the commission report come back into session after a break. And we are going to go to the consent agenda. And make sure that number 1920 was titled also, also. Okay, it was all over. 19, 21. That's 10 points.
No, that's what I'm saying, it wasn't.
Yeah.
But 20, 20, 20 is titled.
20, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31.
31, okay, and, um, okay, Commissioner Combs, do you have anything?
Well, on, uh, on number 18, can, uh, we're going to, we're going to hold, okay, the sheriff is on his way.
Okay.
And it may be an hour, hour and a half of the sheriff gets here, so we will go ahead and do.
Pull that one?
We'll, we'll pull that one until the sheriff gets here. And we'll look at the rest of the consent agenda and we have one item to go to executive zone and then we'll take a break after that. All right. It, it's really just more comments, judges go to sign it. But on either one of them, it said approved, standard short form blanket easement for the Westside Complex, uh, project. You know, I hate ever giving up blanket easement. They can be very, very messy.
They can.
They are very hard to clean up after the fact and it's much, much better to get your easement defined in the beginning. That just gives them like your, anywhere they're in the property, that's. It's, it's already been done.
Okay.
Your permission, I know that.
Anything else?
Didn't know that, Billy. Now, I've got my answers for number 34 that I had and we're pulling 18. And I am good with everything else.
Okay. Okay, we'll entertain a motion on everything but 18 and the ones that were tabled.
My commotion.
My, my, Mr. Hammond, second by Commissioner Tass. All in favor?
Uh.
Opposed motion carries. Okay. We want to go to executive session. Personnel issue will go under government code, personnel section 551.074. Consultation of Attorney's Section 551.071, deliberation of real property 551.072, deliberation of armed security devices and security audit. And we'll go to 20.1, discussing several personnel issues, executive session. And we will recess at, uh, regular session at 11:10. I, yeah, go into the executive session. Mission report comes back into order after executive session. No action out of executive session. Court will adjourn.
No, or we're going to recess?
We will recess until 1 o'clock.
One of my words.
Mission report come to order after recess. Um, just for the record, County Jail Team, Mr. Vio is not here. Want to go over 1918 approved, uh, professional service agreement was HOK for continued design of Justice Center and temporary minimum security for female dormitory design. Sheriff, you wanted to speak on this here?
Well, here's what I. Hello. Um, so I, I want to, I want to tell you all this. I, I have a lot of confidence in, uh, in HOK and, and all of everything that I've done and inquiring and talking to people from one end of the state to the other, other sheriffs, uh, that have. So I feel really good about it. What I don't know is I don't want to get into the money side of it. I'll, I'm going to let the money side of it stay with y'all. Um, and I, and I know that, uh, different structures, obviously, take a lot more time and work than, than some, so I, I, there's no, no doubt in my mind. So I know that there's a, an issue, uh, with projects, I think, uh, being divided. So obviously I'll let you all work through those issues. What I will tell you is the urgency that I have of needing to move forward on the emergency 48-bed female facility. And, and if, and if their fees are reasonable, I feel really good about them and I have a lot of confidence in them. And I know that other people, and I know Carl Griffith, who we've hired. And I know that other people, and I know Carl Griffith, who we've hired as consulting, feels confident with them. And, and I spoke to Carl briefly and Carl's had, had told me that he said, I don't know anything about where they are sitting on fees. And I said, I think they're somewhere around the 6%, but I don't know. And he said, well, it depends on the type of facility. He said, it wouldn't always be the exact same. So I, if, so here's what I would say. If the, if the fees that you're looking at for the emergency temporary 48-bed female facility is in a realistic area where you all feel comfortable with it, I say please move forward with that contract.
I, I believe, I believe that's what we were considering separating this area and moving forward with the female dormitory part. And then have the court look over the fees for the Justice Center designing part.
All right, and, and so here's what I will also tell you on the Justice Center. I, what I, what I will ask you all is to not kick it down the, down the road. All right, so, so yes, okay. I mean, because like I say, I have faith that, that Jeff and Kirk are, you know, that we, we've been working with them since 2014, I guess, really. I mean, I feel very confident that they know and probably in certain ways know better than we do what we need, right? And I'm hoping that we don't have to, you know, start the process over again, that hopefully that you all can just work out whatever fees you need. Because that's, there's no doubt, that's going to be in the best interest of the county is to let them, because they're already way ahead of the game.
I totally agree.
So, but I'll, I'll obviously from a money perspective, I, I'm, I don't even want to begin to put my, my two cents in there because I, I, my two cents doesn't mean anything, you know, from a money, so.
Does anyone have any questions for the sheriff or Congressman here?
No, Sheriff, one thing I would want to just point out so you'll know, I don't think anybody on this court wants to kick it down the road. But I was going back in my memory and I think everyone else. We have really already crossed a lot of these roads with this. And we worked with HOK back in 2019. And Laura did find some information, some stuff transmittals. It'd been going back and forth. So I think what we want to do is just go with that, pick up where we left off. Instead of just start all over again and start. There had already been some things that had already been kicked back and forth and negotiated out.
Because one thing can make sure that I, I want everybody to, to make sure that we kind of understand this is a temporary facility that's going to be labor intensive for us. I mean, I see some issues with having to do this temporary facility because, not this court, but because other courts have kicked it down the road, all right? And, and we still have the same problems that I've had. I mean, I, I hate to remind people that I've had two escapes and all of them have been because of our transporting felonies. Not with secure corridors and, I mean, you know what I'm saying? There's just, we, we are, we're, we're living in a different time right now and
Now, I, I saw where it was saying this temporary facility was 10 months. Is that 10 months and we're ready to open it up?
We hope. I know that there, there was talk. And I, Jeff and I have not spoken on a timeline.
Okay.
I, I know that Carl Griffith and I spoke briefly and he said, Ryan, he said, I feel like Jeff and Kirk can probably get that knocked out in about nine months. He said, but that's just a, a give or take, so.
Have we, George, have we secured that? We haven't purchased that facility yet, have we, to move forward? I mean, I don't want that, that to hold up the sheriff and, and HOK on anything.
Well, it's holding us, but, but he's working on it.
Just the simple answer is no, and that's about all we can do without going into executive session to speak about property. But yes, the answer still, no, we haven't done.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for?
No, Jeff, we'll get you a copy of some correspondence that's going back and forth between our Dim County Attorney and Kurt RD back in 2019. And we just want to pick up from that, compare it to what we're looking at today and, and just take it. So I, I would like to propose that we separate, go ahead and give you to go on the minimum security female dormitory. And then we'll bring this back to court next time.
Okay, we're going to table the design of the Justice Center. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I went and did some research for Commissioner Hammond. A question that, that he asked, I have some information for you.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. And, yeah, and you, you all may not be
Now, I have a motion, you made a motion too.
I want to withdraw my motion to here.
Okay.
And, and y'all may not be aware, but we've actually had advanced teams down here and looked at the building and we already started doing what I call pro bono criteria design and documentation for this other facility. And we've got a pretty good, I call it jumpstart on it. So there's a lot that needs to be looked at. One of the biggest things that this county all have challenge with right now is the city's got supposedly going to be doing some utility development here. And right now, you, you don't have utilities that you need to get done. And that's something that
For the temporary?
With that, with that, we don't know yet because we haven't received the information from the city on what they have, let alone for the other facility of what you want to do.
We need to, we need to reach out and expedite that.
Yes, yeah. And, and we're comfortable in that other building, nine, 10 months. The only thing we can't control right now are materials issues and material acquisition. Because that's on every building that's being done of any type anywhere right now, pretty much.
Now, it's a facility, you want, I'm sorry, is a facility you want to build? Is it going to be built on site or is it going to be built and brought in?
Which one?
For the temporary.
Oh, it's already here. The building's there. We have, we have
That's what I'm saying, what you're going to do is just going to be inside it. You're not building anything, bringing, putting inside.
Yeah, ju- just fencing, pretty much, I think on there, yeah. Yeah, we're going to gut some out of it too. And it's a dorm, so it makes it pretty simple. Yeah. And we move pretty fast on that. The, one of the questions I was asked about, you know, buildings that you typically do are 6%. Our basic fees are 6%. What's unique and different is this building and building type and, and what it does. And the people that are going to be in that building, it's not an eight-hour day or 10-hour day building. I think it's 24/7, 365 by people who don't want to be there who try to tear it apart. Because of that, it's a very specially, special designed building. Jails, we're worried about what we call adjacencies, who needs to be where transported people. But some of the things that are, are unique and for that, that's where the higher fee comes in is the complexity of the site is one thing, but the complexity of the building. There's still a lot of, on there for the Justice Center, there's a lot of civil engineering that's going to be, need to be done with those blocks and exceptional amount. So again, 6% we do for basic services, but you have a lot of special services for these buildings. And this is, this is what's unique. The, the HVAC systems are completely unique requirements for, for a jail. And the security-based plumbing fixtures and design of the plumbing system are different than any other building that you did, that you have to deal with. The fire sprinkler system's different. The smoke removal system is very special. And the standards that are put forth to us by the Texas Commission on Jail Standards are some of the most strict in the country. When there's problems opening a jail, when it first opens up, it's not just the design, but it's how well it was installed by the contractors. We just dealt with that on two different, I have recent jails in Texas again. I've been doing this 15, 20 years in Texas. If you don't get the HVAC right, jail standards won't open the jail. And the sheriff knows they come in and they test and they test and they retest. If the contractor doesn't do what they're supposed to do, it just pushes it out, pushes it out, pushes it out. So anyway, I can't emphasize enough how, how important the smoke removal system is in that. The security electronic control systems, it's unlike anything you probably have in, in any of your county buildings. You know, it's not just CCTV and access control. We also do lighting controls, plumbing controls, intercom controls, door locking systems, door monitoring systems. Those together, we combine into one system that's fully integrated, that's transferable. So it's a very complex security electronic controls package. Detention grade metal and hollow metal for the doors, the frames and the grates. Those are specially made and take a lot of detailed design because you have to mount those big heavy doors the correct way. Depending what type of doors you have, whether they're sliders or swingers or hydraulic and such. Multiple buildings, you're going to have multiple building types and that requires a lot of extra effort, especially on the design and the detail. The, anything that we do at the end of each phase gets turned into gets turned into the Texas Commission on Jail Standards. When it goes to the Texas Commission on Jail Standards, they review it, they make their comments. Then we have to go back and we have to address those comments or redo our drawings on those according to the comments they made. Now, we do a lot of work with them, we get along with them really well, but there's always something. And with that, so it's, these, when, probably the point is, it's not your typical office building. Or grocery store or school, or something like that. This is a really unique type facility. There's also a commercial-grade kitchen and laundry that has to meet detention standards. Like, it's not your normal restaurant-type facility that you have to have with the materials because the inmates usually operate these. The jail itself has cri- critical operational adjacencies. You know, the courthouse, what's unique about a courthouse is on, on that building, you take three separate groups of people and they all have to end up in the same place and go back without ever crossing paths. Try and do that in a large building or multi-floor building that, that you're going to have. That takes a lot of talent, a lot of expertise. And it also has holding, holding cells when they bring them over to the jail and they're prepared for court. You also have court holding and things like that in there as well. The law enforcement control center, it's not, again, your regular office building, the sheriff's headquarters is actually a very secure building. And then I went and I had Kirk go pull other projects that we either just finished or we're in the middle of doing right now. Potter County across the board that averages 8, 8.4%. And that's just a courthouse we're doing for Potter. The courthouse is 8.4% fee. Wichita County jail and law enforcement headquarters, 8.5%. Hayes County, we did their jail, law enforcement headquarters, 911 center, emergency operations center, training building and fleet maintenance building. And that across the board was 8.5%. Kaufman County, right now, we're doing their courthouse, that's 8.5%. Their juvenile detention facility is 8.5%. The courthouse is a renovation. And we talked earlier about, you asked about why renovation's so expensive for this other building. The courthouse here that we're doing for Kaufman, that's, they're, it's like this building. It's their, their quote-unquote historical courthouse. That's 10.5%. The annex that's being redone, that's 10.5%. And that's pretty much a straight office building. The sheriff's training facility is 8.5% and the sub-course, sub-courthouse is 8.5%. And that's all pretty much accepted and when, when called the going rate of the state of Texas. But these, back to, I think, the most important point is this is, these buildings, especially the jail, it's 24/7, 365, and they just get beat up. Courthouses, now we do courthouse, that's supposed to last 50 to 100 years. And that's our standard 75 to 100 is, is what we do those for. You try not to do those often. It's the Center of Justice for Community, you don't want to be moving that around. Jails don't last that long. You know, you, you're lucky when you get 30 years out of one. 25 is the minimum building standard for jail. There's a lot of people who do a jail, jail expansions and renovations in the middle of that time period, or I say 15 to 20 years, all depending on their growth. But that's another thing about the materials that are different to go into both courthouse and jail and not go into a school. And what to go into a grocery store. These are very unique facilities to get a lot of, that, let's call it abuse. So anyway, that's, I want to look that up for you, Commissioner Hammond, about, you know, by eight and a half and by 10, 10 and a half. Those questions. And then one other comment I did want to make, I think it was Carl who spoke to the Commission on Jail Standards. One of the issues on doing temporary jails in the state of Texas, there's been a history of temporary jails being done in the state of Texas that aren't temporary and jail standard knows it. And the sheriff might be able to address this better than me. I'm not sure if the barges are originally meant to be temporary. One of the words that came out of the jail standard was that if you want to move forward on that temporary building, we want to approve a temporary building unless you're going to be moving forward on the Justice Center. I think it was Collin County, I think, one of the ones of Denton. They had some wooden military barracks that were there for over 20 years. That, that, that's the part of temporary versus then we're moving and such. Anyway, I hope that answers some questions. If you have more, I'm here to
Let me add something real quick. So Jeff is correct that Brandon Wood, the executive director of the Jail Commission, did, did say that we no longer approve temporary jails if they're not in the mode of creating, because they know they're only allowed by, by administrative rule. They're only allowed to be used for 36 months. Well, if you're not already moving forward, you're not going to have the new jail bill in 36 months. So that, 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 that is an issue that was brought up by the Jail Commission. Now, I, I do feel quite good about the relationship that HOK has with Jail Commission that I have with Jail Commission and the county judge has with Jail Commission. So I don't think they're going to shut down our 36-month, on the 36th month if we're, you know, four to six months out from completing a new facility. But there's no question that we definitely need to
Sure, this, uh, women's facility, we'll call it the temporary facility. You're going to need additional employees to run this, I think you were talking about 12 or something like that.
So, so here's what I'll, Mr. Here, but I'll tell you. I'm thinking that I can probably try and do it with 12, right? Now, if you talk to the experts, literally Jeff and Kurt, Carl Griffith, and even the Jail Commission, they think I need nothing less than 15 or 16 because they operate where I, where we operate, a four-hour shift, you know, for our four 12-hour shifts. You know, in other words, you, when you, you have a A, B, C, and D shift, everybody works 12 hours. So you're looking at four people to cover a, a cycle. Well, they calculated in as 5.1 FTEs is what it takes because of vacation, comp time, sick leave, training and what have you. But, but I, I have a lot of faith that I think if, because I'm going to have a hard time just trying to hire 12. I'll tell you right now, we, we are, one, nobody wants to go to work. And then two, it's very difficult right now to get people to go into law enforcement and especially work in jail. I mean, it's, it's, we're having a tough time right now just trying to keep our jail positions full. So we've got a little bit of a challenge.
That's another question, I mean. I'll say you're going to need to start trying to fill those positions.
Well, so I, I will tell you that you know, for, for me, it's a, a one step at a time. So once we, but there's no doubt, I'm going to have to come to y'all. We're going to have to figure out what, what we need to do to start ramping up. Because ultimately, it's going to take minimum, absolute minimum standards is two people over there, but that's not safe. So it's really got to be three people in that, that women's facility. So obviously, four shifts, that's 12 people. Now, we can negotiate, we can work with overtime and the people that we have currently, you know, they're trained as jailers, transition them over there to get people trained. But there's no doubt, at, at some point, when we determine exactly where y'all want to take it, we need to identify at least a pot of money where I can start hiring people and start getting them trained. So the, the sad part is, is it doesn't look like this COVID thing is going to end anytime soon, regardless of what people, I, I, you know, I, I, nobody, we not have a seem to know. But what we do know is the jail capacity in the state of Texas continues to get smaller and smaller and smaller in the state right now. No matter what the legislature's doing, they're trying to make it to where people can bond out easier or, and then other times are making it where they can't bond out. You know what I mean? It's, it's a twofold. But what's the problem is now is we've just run out of beds, not just our county. I mean, I don't know if y'all knew Liberty County's building one, a new jail right now. I mean, it's just, it's just, and, and as fast as Houston is growing and southeast Texas is growing with petrochemical industry. And, and which is interesting to me because even with the current Biden administration, the petrochemical industry is still growing and still building and still, you know, price for barrel oil is really holding itself right now. If we happen to make a change and change the, the next four years, we're going to see Houston boom. And Houston booms, we're booming. And we're going to be in a bind. So thank y'all for trying before we think it, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Okay, court, I mean, I'll entertain a motion then.
Okay, I'm going to make the same motion as started two a while ago. And I, I do want to point out, make sure Sheriff and everybody knows, we're not kicking this can down the road, but we've got about a $9 million commitment we're getting ready to sign. And we don't take it lightly, you know? I don't know how much legal review this thing has, whatever. But, you know, we do want a chance to make sure all the P's are dotted, the I's are crossed, and the right eyes have looked at it. So I would say that we move forward with the minimum security So I would say that we move forward with the uh minimum security female dormitory design and that we bring the uh justice center and jail back for next court.
Motion by my. Got any further discussion?
I got a couple of questions. Do we want to go ahead and do this or do go ahead and ask my question? Doesn't pertain a lot to Commissioner Collins' motion, but uh so have these numbers been adjusted recently for the total cost of this project? Because right now, this is at seventy-six point five million. And I heard previously that number was somewhere around eighty million. Which had been a couple of years ago.
Now, you're talking about the justice center.
Yeah, the entire justice center.
Let's go ahead and vote on this. I got a a motion in a second. You need a discussion on that. All in favor? Oppose, motion carries. Okay.
So have these numbers been adjusted lately or was these are previous numbers we're going off of?
Yeah, I'd say just what we did is we looked at the space program again, and then did cost estimating off of that space program. And for for updated pricing, uh which is important, because it's changed every year, the past two years especially. So this this is, and we did uh two years out to construction up to a point of two years from when the contract starts. Uh which we anticipate being right around now. So those pricey, the pricing is what we would estimate being good for two years out from now, when the equipment's procured. And so if there's any delays, that covers the delays too. We also put in there, we always uh put in there what's called a contingency C P. And that's for the unknowns. And we do that on every project. It comes out less, it comes out less.
What was the contingency, contendence?
Typically, ten percent.
Ten percent?
Yeah, I have to go look at the details.
Normally typical.
Yeah, uh we do ten. There's something to twenty-five. That's a lot of times kills projects. We've actually come in behind, I'd say, eight different firms in the state of Texas where the architects put in so much contingency and just because they pretty darn good at it. And Kelly Rowe, who's the president of the Texas Sheriff's Association now, when he did his jail, twelve-hundred-bed jail, Kurt was the cost estimator on that. And I like sharing this story because it's very real, and I've seen it time and time again, not just in Texas, but around the country. And we told them exactly what it would cost for them to build the twelve-hundred-bed jail. Another firm came in behind and said, hey, we can give you a whole other pod, what they're telling you that will cost. They went ahead and they hired the other firm. Two months into the into the project, they came back and said, well, we can't give you a whole pod. We can give you half a pod. Another two months came out, they said, well, we can't give you the half a pod. Uh we can only give you basically what we told them they could get. And the commissioners court had to go back to the well, because they'd already committed, and they had to go borrow another twenty million dollars after they'd already had the bond measures approved. Kelly's written a letter about, because he was the jail administrator at the time, and now he's the sheriff, and now he's president of Texas Sheriff's Association. He wrote a letter saying it's amazing with all the unknowns that go into a major project like this, and all the technical parts and aspects that go into it, of just how accurate Kurt and the team was on getting these things right from what they didn't know and compared to what they were told by somebody else. And we've had that.
In these fees, that is also y'all working to get us to bond, to get us to elections, right?
Sure, yeah, we always assist. Public presentations, everything. I was I was at one last night.
Yeah, that's that's all I want to note, make sure of. Now, I mean, I'd like to ask Commissioner Collins and Hammond to work with George and yourself on these fees, because I'd like to see what we can get to present on next court. I don't want to go any later to next court. Because I'd like to see us get something approved so we can move forward as soon as possible. I mean, I think for, I think Ms. Heather said that we can't make a May election, but we'd like to make a November election of twenty twenty-two. So I think it's that that twelve months will fly by. So I'd just say is jump on the fees, get that done, so we can get design done, get a cost analysis done, and see what I was going to go on that bond election. Uh so we can get it on the November deal, so we can get moving forward in this justice.
For every week you save, Commissioner, in the process, it saves the county almost a hundred thousand dollars, cost escalation.
So these two weeks is costing us two hundred thousand?
It it right now, it's it's a hundred million dollar project, let's say, and this one's just on the right. And six percent cost escalation. Right there, that's that's six million dollars divided by twelve, it's five hundred thousand per month divided by four weeks, it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a week. That you don't see it, but it's real and it's there. The more you can be shovel-ready for when it's time to bet off your.
Y'all willing to work with George and Jeff to bring us something back for next court?
We can visit just a few minutes.
Do we have anything else that we need to bring forward? I think that's all we have.
Thank you for having me speak.
A little bit of more information for me. I'm sorry. Uh so the the design development phase, where's that put us? I guess, what's what's the what's the time span between design development phase and contract document phase? So.
It goes blends one right into the other. CDs, the contract, the design development is sixteen weeks, and then we go take it over to jail standards during that time. We get their blessing and or whatever we make changes, and then we go right into CDs, the contract uh contract documents.
So we don't, we don't have that scheduled. So you just reference that to like sixteen weeks? Is that in this document somewhere?
Yes, it's on the exhibit A on page nine.
Okay, yeah, I am printing all that, so.
Yeah, we have the design down to one one year, and this is for an intact campus. We have a deep bench there in Dallas. All all the architectural designs done in our Dallas office and the engineering designs done right here in Houston.
Okay, and the reason I ask that, we budgeted some money for twenty-two to get all this started and get and property acquisition and all that. So we're just trying to see which basket we got to put our money in.
And at least get it through DD, so you're ready to go.
He spoke about uh infrastructure. I'm I'm going to suggest whether it's the commissioner today that has Anawak or the potential commissioner of tomorrow that has Anawak. Somebody better get Anawak on board. Or or we're going to have a hundred million uh facility that we can't flush.
I mean, down the for uh field a little bit.
We need find out and we'll put to, we go by there. That may, see if we can get them to come to next court and let us know where they're at.
I think there's a new city manager. The city manager that we've visited with, there's been a lot of them here.
You might have anything else? Okay, if nothing else coming up for the court, we are adjourned at one thirty-two.